Um, can we hit?
So just so you know, I have to leave back quarter camp.
All right. Uh, Commissioner's meeting Wednesday, April third, two thousand and twenty four. All commissioners are present. Public comments first. Public comment at this time. Elected officials and department heads. I'm gonna start up on the wall here and say, Doug, do you have anything for us today? You gotta. Maybe you have nothing to say.
Your news is muted.
Yeah.
When do, when do you want to? Talk about the sidewalk project?
You're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda. For later.
We'll get to you in a second. Can you just be patient about that, man? All right, um, you have a, um.
Very quickly, I need to request a non F M L A leave of absence for one of our paramedics. Um, who, um, is having some issues secondary to responding to a critical to them. Um, just through. April eighteen. And he does have enough time to pay for it. It's just, uh, he doesn't qualify yet for F M L A because he hasn't been there for a year. So I would like to grant them that time away to take care of himself.
So move.
Second.
Aye, aye, aye.
Commissioner Wasback.
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Hi.
And Commissioner Clark.
Yes, thank you.
All righty. And move on to, unless Suzanne, you have something else I didn't know.
Not.
Okay.
Not.
Um, scheduled items, master agenda item number one, one, six, eight, Department of Justice, rural domestic violence. Dating, violence, sexual assault. I have to have my glasses on, I don't know. And stock and stalking, it looked like data to me.
Oh.
And stalking program grant application. Suzanne Bensley representing Ashton, expected vote, a motion to apply for the seven hundred thousand over three years to implement compassionate care program which will serve victims of domestic violence and sexual assault with a sub grant Mananac Center for Violence Prevention to hire a victim's advocate and sub grant to Cheshire Medical Center for Medical Forensic Program Manager as well as other related activities.
Correct. Yeah. Done this several weeks ago, but now I have the details. And I, I'm coming back to your official votes that we may apply and if awarded that we may accept the grant funds. Uh, as noted, this would be for seven hundred thousand dollars will be split between Cheshire Medical Center and Nanak Center for Violence Prevention. And Mick is here with us and I'll let him take away with the rest of this and I'm here to answer an technicality question on the application itself. Mick, would you like to tell them about what we've been working on?
And Mick, if you don't mind, if you would just come over to the table, I think it would be better. Just reviewing.
Great. Well, good morning, everybody. It's nice to see you again. As you recall, I was here a couple. A month or so ago, um, about a different grant. So, uh, that certainly indicates that M C V P is, um, is excited to be actively applying for grants. Trying to do, you know, get some more money so that we can, uh, implement some more programs. Uh, it's great that you've been able to partner with Suzanne. She's been just absolutely fantastic. Can't say nothing. Good things about her. Um, and now also looking to other partners in the community in Cheshire Medical in particular. Um, this is a really exciting program for me personally. It really kind of hits at some of the things that I'm, uh, that I, I care most about. And have been most excited about in my career. And a big part of that is, is just a holistic, comprehensive, integrated approach to helping people recover from trauma. And the, the, the reality is that since at least two thousand and seventeen, um, the, there had been what they call sane nurses over at Cheshire Medical. A sane nurse stands for Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner. And basically, these are nurses who have special training in medical forensics. So that when a case of sexual assault comes into the emergency room, they know, they, they have the special skills and training that they can, that they can provide that care. Um, and they can also, uh, take some medical forensic evidence, uh, in case there would be any kind of prosecution that would come from that particular case. Every time a, uh, one of these, uh, sexual assault cases comes through the emergency department over at Cheshire Medical since two thousand and seventeen, it has immediately triggered a phone call to M C V P. So we've had this partnership where M, an M C V P advocate would go then to the emergency department and be with that individual as they're going through that very difficult time and a very difficult examination. Um, so we've, we started that, that, I mean, in some ways we started this program, but it was, it's always been this informal program that hasn't really had, uh, we haven't had a designated M C V P advocate that can really focus on this. It's a very specialized sort of service and care. So we haven't had a person in our team that had been able to really just focus on that. They don't just have like a, a, an office or a program manager or anybody that helps to coordinate it. They're really just these four nurses who are giving up themselves and their time. They're, they're, they're basically not even on the clock. We just, they're called by the emergency department. If they happen to be there, they're there. We're hoping to broaden this entire program, bring new, new sane nurses on board for them to hire a new M C V P advocate so that we can really work together and then gradually start bringing in more departments, um, within the, the hospital or within the community. Behavioral and mental health, substance abuse issues, the sort of things that people are coming in with. So it's a, it's a really exciting opportunity to develop a program, a compassionate care program that is holistic in nature. Bringing together many of the resources and services that our community has already strong, that we're already strong in, but will be even stronger. We have something that we can mobilize and have, uh, and formalize as a, as an actual program. So.
Do you plan on hiring extra people or?
Yeah, so, uh, so M C V P would hire one additional full-time advocate, um, which is, would be just great. Um, because there, there is a, uh, one, one of the, one of the unfortunate things when you don't have a formal program is that you're not, you're not getting, you're not being able to, uh, capture everyone who needs the support. So the, the hope would be by hiring some, someone with M C V P who has, um, special, uh, experience. It's in, in education and being able to identify and help that be present over there, uh, not one hundred percent of the time. Probably seventy or eighty percent of the time, be over there in an office, uh, which, and this, this is actually in, um, partnership with the, uh, population health program that they have over there. So they've been very supportive of this and, um, we would actually have an advocate, um, in their kind of office setting. And then we're going to, um, try to get, uh, use some funds to train because it is a training program. Um, some more nurses, so we would recruit nurses, um, who are already on, uh, at Cheshire Medical in different departments. Um, try to get them trained so that they can be same nurses and then hire a part-time program manager over there. Um, so that that individual can really just help to coordinate, uh, an actual program, bring things together, make sure that, um, that the hospital understands what we're doing. We're gonna work closely with the SART program. I've talked to Kathy Kimball. I don't know if you all know that. Chris, Chris certainly knows Kathy. Um, Kathy Kimball is the head of the SART program, which is the Sexual Assault Response Team. She, she man, she manages or directs, coordinates the entire statewide SART program, but she also coordinates the Cheshire County SART program. They're gonna be kind of like our advisory body, um, because those are, uh, already, that's an interdisciplinary body of, um, there's, uh, law enforcement and M C V P and nurses and, uh, county prosecutors. Uh, so there, there's, the, the, I think there's just a lot of potential that we can have, um, this coordinated effort. On the part of several different, uh, players within stakeholders within the community.
What does the acronyms, um, uh, saying stand for? Sexual Assault Nurse?
Nurse Examiner.
Nurse Examiner. Yeah. Thank you.
It's another.
So many questions on the grant.
Yeah, is this, is this something likely gonna come back next year?
This is a three-year.
Three-year grant.
This is a three-year grant through the Department of Justice. The way they administer their grants is as one three-year grant. They are typically generous about an extension, so it could potentially extend into four years. They are not asking for a sustainability plan within the application, although there is, uh, with intention within the program as we've discussed, it is to use the time to find how we extended. So at this time, we don't quite know, but we feel that it is one of those things that you bring it in and in particular, Cheshire Medical will figure out a way. Uh, as he, as Mick noted, uh, Trish is on, is gonna be joining us and helping us again. I haven't had direct work with her since the Public Health Network, except for the Medical Reserve Corps, which, which is teeny tiny. Uh, she will be supervising programmatically the program manager that we are hiring at Cheshire Medical, which at the moment, the budget that we have is twenty hours a week. This will be a part-time, half-time position. That position is primarily devoted to coordinating the nurse examiners, the medical staff and the work that they need to do, including what their training might be and probably also identifying other medical staff already on staff to be trained. Because right now, the, the four to six people that they have, this is not their job. It is more like an additional skill set that is called upon them when they're at work for whatever their job is. There are nurses, the department here, department there. So what, what also wasn't mentioned was twenty-four-seven. Outside of regular hours, we're gonna bring on twenty-four-seven on call, which similar to like what we have with the deputies and what we have with the nurses, you pay a small fee just so they're available. And the grant will cover that small fee so that it is available sixteen out of twenty-four hours times three hundred and sixty-five days a week. We're assuming the other eight hours with additional people being trained, those daytime hours during the week, we're not looking to cover because the assumption is the four to six people we have now, plus the more that we'll get overtime through this grant, there'll be even more people on staff so we don't need to have on-call during the day. The main reason though is the funding only goes so far. Um, so we are looking for approval for these three years and during which time we'll figure out the sustainability plan. And it is possible that I can identify more grants of during this time, including this one, which also allows for continuation within this exact notice of funding opportunity. It did specify if you've been a grantee in a previous round for this exact thing, you have this whole subset of criteria which says to me, we can come back for more. And right now, although we are not gonna put it on paper, that is the sustainability plan, another grant three years from now. So we've got at least six years minimum before grant funding becomes a non-option under this one program. That means we have six years to find more grants as well or sustainability plans. So long story short, I think we got enough time to figure it out.
Yeah, I think two thoughts. One is that this is another example of us identifying a need in the community. And instead of building it within, you work with your, your community partners to develop it because they're the experts in the field. And I think it's a smart way of doing business. That's something that, you know, when people say, you've got so many grants coming through the county. No, it's really, a lot of it's, a lot of them are pass-throughs to go to other agencies like Hannah Grimes or whatever it may be that allows them to do their work because they're the ones that know it. And this is a prime example of us looking at this, this way, because these are the guys that, that really understand it. And I don't see this any different than Connected Families New Hampshire that started out as, um, um, what is, what was it? Uh, not rep, uh, is that?
Non-accident.
System of Care. Thank you. I had service leak in my head. I couldn't get it out of my head.
So.
Uh, it was, but it started with a four-year grant that we said, it's going away if we can't find some level of funding. We were able to find that and now the program is statewide and it's doing incredible work.
Work and it's on its tenth year of grant funding with a pending four-year application. So sometimes you could just keep on. You could just keep on. Also worth noting though is that through this grant, it's the, the funding is going to Cheshire Medical and the Nanox Center for Prevention. And we are still benefiting our own people because right over here, we have Sarah and David who sit on the SART's team. Through this work, their ability to do their job will be improved. Because we're gonna be providing training to the members of the SART's team. And the time for their training will be in-kind, so it's not noted. We won't see a cash flow. But both Sarah and David anecdotally support this, especially David really supports this. He was joining us quite often in the beginning, but, uh, it sort of drifted away from the prosecution side and he's too busy at the moment. But it will help them do their jobs too.
When this first came up, we talked about data. What do, can you, do you have a better sense of the frequency of? Uh, sexual assault?
Yes. We, they see about thirty cases at the emergency department in a year. And this is when there's minimal to no awareness within the community. Somebody just comes in, this has happened, they say it and things start happening.
And, and these are mostly self-referrals or?
There, I, I mean. Yes, insofar as anyone who comes through has to, uh, has to consent to be, to, to have the exam done. So, um, but, but the, the police will often kind of, uh, help guide. The police will often contact us and will encourage people to go to the emergency room and that will be done there and that sort of thing. But, um, but.
I guess that was where.
Yeah, so they, they.
They're facilitated by.
Us and law enforcement for the most part. Yeah, that, that's correct. Um, and one thing that, that is also important to, to note about those numbers is that right now, the, the, so there, there is technical training and certification required in order to support certain populations. That those include children, pediatricians, those include elders, those include, um, people with disabilities. So there, the, in, in order to provide the, the sane examinations for those populations, you need to have additional training, which is quite robust. And our current sane nurses don't have that. So that means that if a child is sexually assaulted, we can't help them right now.
You have to send them.
We have to, we have to send them somewhere else. And, and that, and that's true for people, for these, for other populations as well that I just named, that, you know, if, if a person is, is assaulted, we're, they're not able to help it. Even in cases of domestic violence right now, they aren't able to, to, uh, to complete a full forensic examination to help collect evidence. They're able to provide, you know, treatment and help somebody who comes in with the, you know, broken ribs and a, a head trauma or something like that. But in terms of the technical side of things, and you know, this is a little bit beyond me, but in terms of the technical side of things of, uh, treating somebody, but also collecting some of that medical forensic evidence, we don't have that either. So the numbers that we currently have, this thirty, is, is, they're very low. Personnel is one reason. Capacity in terms of training and what, what they're even able to, to, uh, to address is, is not fully there.
So, so does some of this involve public education? I mean, is there a kind of a latent?
A, a little bit, yeah.
The grant does limit spending on the awareness piece.
But, but there's a percentage that we would, that, that we would be able to, um, conduct some public outreach to help people understand at least what's available in their community and the most important, how to access it. Uh, and, and you know, accessing the, the services is, is, is key. And you know, and you've been, and the way that we can, we can maximize that is by making sure that our service partners, whether it be other nonprofit organizations, faith communities or, um, you, you know, uh, community kitchens or, you know, I mean, like there's, there's not, there's knowledge materials out there so that people can have a brochure.
And the grant will be creating more. We're gonna create four pieces specifically. At least that's what we're writing down. That would be an in-kind contribution mainly through Cheshire Medical where they have their own printing, they have their creative. So we're mainly writing in a small amount to print brochures to create a presentation board. And I wrote in there too, a few activities to present to, to different committees, rotaries, coalitions, you guys.
Yeah.
You guys will get to drive one of their slide decks out of this. And through those kinds of activities, we'll be raising awareness, but the grant seemed to be pretty particular about they don't wanna spend a lot of money on marketing. Just a little bit is okay.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, then you would be looking for a motion to apply for the seven hundred thousand dollars over three years to implement the capacity care program which will serve victims of domestic violence and sexual assault with a sub grant to Mananac Center for Violence Prevention to hire a victim's advocate and sub grant to Cheshire Medical Center for a Medical Forensic Program Manager as well as other related activities.
It's a move.
Second. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Wasback.
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark. There you go.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, hopefully next time I see, I'll have a seven thousand dollar check.
Is it, is it a check or is it that you bill for services? Uh, how do you do that? Do they just?
Neither. It's reimbursement based. They would bill us, we bill DOJ, DOJ pays us, we pay them.
Yeah, one of us.
All right.
We're getting very little out of this one, guys. This is it.
All right.
We're getting fifteen thousand over the, the three years, less than about five thousand per year in indirect because it's all in the form of some recapping.
But the impact is that much.
It's not about the money.
No, this will be, this will be a good one.
This, this is a good one.
All right, thank you. Master agenda item one, one, six, nine, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. Voucher application Suzanne Bensley is here. Action expected, vote to accept, uh, vote to apply and accept seventy thousand, seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars in federal funds to sign, uh, and sign associated documents. Suzanne.
Sometimes it changes topics like wish, wish flash, right? From domestic violence to solar panels on the red barn on the Maplewood property. That's what this one is for. This is an entitlement grant, which means uh, the energy efficiency, you see, energy efficiency, uh, forgot the seed block grant gave us seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars with some pretty hefty strings attached. But they're pretty much saying, you can meet these terms, that money is yours, we don't have to compete for it. So that's basically how that part of it goes. We've been aware of this for over a year. It's taken them a long time to pull together their portal. And then me, literally four months to get past technical difficulties to access it, which I finally had with two and a half weeks to spare to the deadline. So that brings us here. Some things to note about what this is. The project in general is to put, uh, the quote we have is for fifty-one solar panels to go on the barn, but to hit the seventy-seven thousand, I wrote into there a quantity of one hundred solar panels to be installed on the red barn. Uh, some of the caveats to this is the program requires that you, meaning Cheshire County Government on behalf of Cheshire County jurisdiction, adopt, sir, uh, but they're calling it, um, an energy conservation strategy. They give you five options. This is among, I'm giving you the highlights, the top highlights of this program. There's numerous caveats that go within each. So if any of these feel like you need to know more, let me know. I'll bring the research back to you. So here are your options. Carbon neutrality by twenty fifty. Reduce energy use by fifty percent by twenty fifty. One hundred percent carbon-free energy use by twenty fifty. Eighty percent E D adoption by twenty fifty. Pay prevailing wages for all construction and maintenance projects by twenty twenty-five. Note, twenty twenty-five is next year. So this one's kind of like, maybe if you wanna check this one anyway.
So that would be like Davis Bacon?
Which applies, but we checked that box or not, that would be another one of the caveats. That we have to pay Davis Bacon wages for the installation part of it. Our contract is just a quote. I'm not sure if the quote involves Davis Bacon or not. I'm not sure if you know, I don't know if it's even worth figuring that out right now. But that will be part of the job that we will, um, at the moment is assigned to Chris to do, to make sure that we hit Davis Bacon. That's another caveat.
I see that.
Of course. So that, that's the main big thing that you have to formally adopt this goal. The grant does not give any details on what you do about it. It's not asking us to do any objectives. They're not asking for a work plan. They're not asking for you to notarize or sign anything separately. Uh, prior to the meeting, Jack, you signed a few different, uh, forms. Among them was the terms and conditions for this grant that within, buried within that says you'll set these goals, but from what I can tell, and I'm gonna read it more thoroughly a little later today to be sure, from what I can tell, they're not asking you for you to do anything. They're asking you to set a goal, but they're actually not asking you to achieve the goal. Just to, so we made goals on the tide.
I, I will yield to. I will yield to the county energy as our commissioner Clark. Well, I was wondering, um, are you surprised if we don't have, uh, energy goals?
Well. I think we've talked about it, but I think we didn't, didn't, instead of putting goals in place, we did action like, like, you know, you know, we just did it. We, we, you know, we, we, if you look at, one of the goals was early on, getting rid of, uh, any level of crude oil that we have on, on any of our campuses, which we have done. The only crude, uh, only oil that we have currently is for the generators.
Okay, so this, we're, we're gonna have to do it for this anyway, right?
Right. So, so we've already done it. You know, we've got biomass, we've got geothermal. We did all the, all the, uh, energy upgrades in all of buildings and the significant cost that, you know, that, you know, we had, we had an agreement with one of our propane providers prior to us doing some of these upgrades and all of a sudden, where we were supposed to be for usage of propane went down, uh, more than fifty percent. You know, that we're seeing, you know, we've seen all, you know, all campus wide over a two hundred thousand dollar savings in, in, in what we've done with, with some of the work we've done over the last, you know, five years.
Okay, so.
So I feel very comfortable with anything that's in there because I think we're almost there.
Yeah. Is the red barn ready? Structurally ready for panels or is this?
It's part of everything that's gonna happen.
But that has to happen first before we put the panels.
Correct.
I mean, do we know if it's, you know, if it's stable enough? Has it been tested for that yet?
Yeah.
As bad.
Yeah.
When do you think that the panel project would start?
Um, I would say sometime if they're gonna start in, well, if the, if they're going to start in twenty twenty-four, then it'll probably be, um, over the summer that they start so that it's about a three. I've been told a three, maybe four month project, but three is what they're looking at. So it would be this year. It would be this year. The panels would go up this year.
Does it require an permitting by Westmore?
No. Well.
As part of this process, I have to go through, um, any verdict side off on the, the N E F A declaration. And I've determined through this N E F A declaration that this is not applicable because we're not doing anything. The solar panels are going on the roof. We're not touching the ground.
Yeah, um, I, I'm just. Be able to dovetail, you know, the construction with the, with the, the solar panels because.
It's all, it's all part of the project.
Because if the roof is not just right, you know, it could, you, you could have more problems down the road.
Um, solar gave has already come in and already done all the markings for that.
I do have a report filed for that.
Yeah.
One other caveat to this one. Um, says that you need to coordinate with other local governments that have received grants. I'm just putting a guess on this and just letting you know that. Any call another town and.
Well, we've had multiple, Commissioner, Commissioner Clark has had multiple conversations with the city of Keene, has sent multiple emails around, uh, looking at partnerships of, uh, if, if we could, you know, when it comes to solar.
Hmm. Very good.
I know you've reached out to Elizabeth on multiple occasions.
And then the last one is, is that the project has to benefit disadvantaged communities, which I, uh, am making a case throughout that it is beneficial to the entire Cheshire County and N B R C thinks that we are disadvantaged as a county. So that's how I'm making that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that is this.
We follow the northern borders because of, of it. I don't, you know.
I have been referencing northern borders in so many grants lately. Uh, and, and we are also, uh, considered rural according to an analyzer on the first website and you put the two of them together and it looks really good and granted.
Yeah.
Yes. Statistically, we are a desperate county, but I live here and I don't.
So I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion, a motion to accept, uh, seventy-seven, uh, to apply and accept, uh, for seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars in federal funds and to sign any other associated documents.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Wasback.
All right.
Commissioner England.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all happy, guys. Unless you wanna just talk grants in general, I got all day.
Let's keep moving.
Well, speaking of that.
Yeah.
It'll take you a long time to summarize all the grants, you know, those periodic reports that you do.
Does it take me a long time? Yeah, like a lot, why? But I don't mind.
Well, I think I'll be. I think I'll be speaking to a group about what county government does. I don't know where, but.
Sooner than you think. Because I've asked that they call a meeting sooner. And also.
Really ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah, but on that sort of similar note, I had hoped to make an announcement of my next grant writing class by now. But I am stalled because I haven't had time to return back to finishing up creating materials and I am still one entire lesson short of, uh, I've got the topic for it, but I'm just not ready because I need to be able to announce, hey, this is what you're gonna be learning. And I've made such substantial revisions. So the long story short there is, is that I haven't had the time to finish up my prep for it to make an announcement for May. Uh, but if I'm able to circle back to it by the end of this week, I might still have a chance at that. It's just not looking great. So.
So it will probably be in May then.
It will more likely, it's looking like I'm, uh, a fall, another fall. Yeah. I would not be able to do it over the summer.
Yeah.
Um, I'm.
And you don't wanna do it in the summer because people are always, you.
People are all the way and, uh, I've got some stuff that is gonna have me out of the office that I'm, um, surprised I had to wear another.
Where do they all go?
Yeah, well, you're missing the best part. Uh, not the best part, but yeah, you're, you're gonna be out.
I'm gonna be out twice. I have to get surgery. I have both of my ankles separately. I ruptured the same ligament symmetrically on both sides. Um, and.
Two for one.
Right? They won't actually. I thought that was a great idea. Hey, let's just open them at the same time. You're like, oh, you're gonna want to walk or something. So. They'll be separated with the first one coming out, uh, I think it's August twelfth, the second or the third week in August. I need to put together an email for, for Kim and Chris to, because I literally am just scheduling this now.
Okay.
So August is not gonna be good timing, but hopefully, uh, it worked out really well. November, December, things really simmer down in grants in November, December, every year, quiet scout. Things really simmer down in grants in November, December every year, quiet scout, right, for the big rush, and then the end of December. But that's looking quite likely. I hope to not make this level of changes to my materials again, but the feedback was incredible, that I felt like I needed to use it all.
Right.
For the whole redesign.
Awesome, thanks.
Very good, I'll watch you after news next time.
Alright, next item is master agenda item one one seven O, all state sidewalk code, uh, quote, uh, Superintendent Yozway is here. Ask and expect to approve or reject the contract for the sidewalk construction at the Department of Correction. What, um, just a quick sidebar and then Doug and Talk is that, you know, um. There've been some issues with the sidewalks, um, up there and we figured, we might as well while all state is up there, take a look at it. But there was an incident too that Doug and Talk do, so Doug, this is yours.
Um, yeah, it came to our attention, cause about ten days ago, we had a staff injury. Uh, relating to the sidewalk, uh, he, an officer tripped. There's a lot of, um, settling in different parts of the, with the, um, substrate underneath. And bumps in that whole sidewalk, both the main walkway as well as the. Other like patio area out in front, um, so, um. We temporarily have put a orange stripe on the spot where it sticks up right in the walkway. But we wanted to take a look at it, and so we got a quote through all states. They would be the contractor. Um, the quote came in at fifty four thousand six eighty three. It does fall under the amount approved for the overall parking project on the, on the capital line there.
What, what, what is the resolution? What are they gonna be doing for this money?
They would be, uh, pu- bringing in cr- crushed dra- gravel a- and compacting it. And basically replacing the whole shoot and match, um, and it has.
With concrete, yeah.
Has to be cool, it's concrete, yeah, it wouldn't be paved. It has to be closely coordinated with the paving project, um. Basically happen in concert with, when, when they're doing that paving around the, the circle.
Sure. No, and we, we said it's like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the paving. Uh, and it came in at about to one ninety five. So we have the, the funding in place to do the sidewalks also.
Where are we gonna be paving?
Uh, you're paving the roads, not the parking lot itself, but the road area, so the road of, the roads around. But not that big parking area at this point, and they're lifting up the, some of the, the sewers have dropped down and they're lifting them back up.
Are we, uh, we're doing that parking lot exit at the same time? We talked about something.
So we, we, um, we talked about it and we had, we were not gonna do it for two reasons. One was the fire pond and thinking it wasn't possible. And the second was that if we allow traffic to divert into the parking lot there. We can't with our current camera system read the, the license plates and from time to time we. Do need and have had a need to, to know license plate numbers. However, the fire pond is not an issue. And we could do that, create a second exit and the, the thought would be to make it an exit only. Um. Part of it is also, we're gonna have to do a temporary egress while the work's going on anyway.
Anyway.
Not that that would be paved, you know, as a temporary thing. But I do think we're gonna end up doing that, Terry, after all.
Well, ju- just be sensitive about the wetlands mitigation.
Right.
Issues, because a lot of what we did is for that purpose. Like all of the brook down at the, along Route one oh one.
Mm-hmm.
That was part of wetlands mitigation.
Right.
So there, there was, um.
A level of trade off too.
Yeah, well, there was a requirement to do certain things and to isolate certain areas that we actually, I think. Paid to Wetlands mitigation fund because there wasn't adequate. Uh, area for us to actually do mitigation. So, um, so I, I just wanna be sensitive to that.
Yeah, my, my concern would be that and also security, just to make sure, whatever we do, right now you have one way in and one way out.
I'm, I'm not sure why it's even necessary, but. But, um, yeah.
Uh, it came up during the executive committee meeting around the budget and. I, I don't know that it's that necessary personally, um. I think the comment was at times it's quite full and busy in the parking lot. It might be a good idea to do it while we were in the midst of the overall project. Um, I don't feel strongly one, one way or another. Um, I did agree at that time, we would look into it. And investigate whether it was the wetlands issue or our concern about the, the camera. Uh, sighting of, of, you know, view of, of license plates.
I, I, I'm more inclined for the security aspect and, and the lack of need really. I mean, how, how much, how, how much money do we spend on a mere convenience occasionally when, when. For some reason, rather, people have to wait three minutes, I mean, the, the intersection down the bottom of the hill coming down to one oh one is worse.
Yes.
So cause if you're, to the extent that you can't get out of the parking lot as quickly as you might like, you're still gonna wait down the bottom of the hill.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the, the, the security issue, that puts a whole new light on it for me, I mean, I didn't really even think about that. Um.
Yeah, I mean, what our solution was gonna be was to make it, uh, put a sign that says exit only.
Yeah.
Yes, someone could still drive in that, the exit, um, that, but that would mostly. Ameliorate our concern about the camera view of incoming.
That's what I played up doing this is driving. But, but that all, that's why, that's also why we, why we have those boulders there.
Yeah.
To prevent somebody, because we went through, we went through a fair amount of debate on those white signs that say warning. Congressional facility, uh, being recorded, there's a certain number of signs, the wording is specific. Uh, there's spaced a certain amount of boxes, people warning that they're gonna be videotaped, so, I mean, there's a method to the setup. Uh, and frankly, slowing people's entrance or departure. Isn't a bad thing from a security point of view. But that's just a little bit of history of those wetland areas. The approach, the signage, the boulders and the whole approach to security thing.
Are there signs there now indicating that, that, uh, that, that the license plates are being checked or recourse?
Well, there, yeah, we should go in there, you'll see this, I think, two or three signs that. Uh, warn people of, 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 of what, what, what the potential is in terms of. You know, what we're doing and, and what sort of facility it is, I can't remember the exact wording, but.
Uh, yeah. We also have.
Yeah, no, I know.
You know, you walk in, and that's why they help, you walk in. You, you walk up and home with you because the red alarm, red alarms go off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Doug, in, in light of all that, why don't, why don't we just put that on, uh, on, on more study or something that. I don't, you know, it's.
We'll table it.
Yeah, it makes more, it makes, it makes more sense now that you've brought forward that, you know, more information.
You know, there, there's a lot of things just to, to spend money on that are defensible, for me, I struggle with that one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, I'm, I'm good with that, other than we'll need a temporary egress what, during the work. But we'll, we'll cut, we'll grass it back over and the, the boulders probably will get, get moved back after, that, that's fine.
Right, yeah. And Doug, what is the, what is, what is the price?
Of fifty, of the, of the bid on the, on the sidewalk area? Fifty, fifty four, six eighty three, seventy five.
You, you know, that, the walkway that we put in was cute, it's got a whole bunch of seams with these little tile inserts. And they all just kind of work differently with the frost season and so coming up, they're going down.
Yeah.
It, 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 it was a nice idea, but, you know, the, the subsoil doesn't work for it very well.
Yeah, yeah, with our drainage problems up there, is, is this, is this gonna really fix the problem or is it just gonna come back?
Well, there's a lot of work up the hill.
Uh, what, you mean the entire paving project? Uh, I, I know that part of what they looked at and when they assessed this project. Was absolutely the, the drainage aspect and I, I think there's some drainage work. Beyond just what Chris mentioned, which is certainly part of the, the work, the, the, the drainage, um. The drainage in the dri- driveways on the way up. That's gonna be redone and hopefully prevented from dropping down, so you don't. Lose a spunk, swallow up a small car. But I think there was other aspects of drainage work they were gonna do after they ripped up the pavement. To try to reduce the water from going underneath parking lot and freezing. And a lot of that i- is what's caused, you know, the, the need to do this after, what's it been, fourteen years? Um, whereas for example, the parking lot where the hill is not nearly as steep and the drainage issue is not the same. That parking lot's in good, pretty good shape, um, but the perimeter road around the jail. It's crumbling because of that drainage issue. Now, I can't tell you exactly how confident they are they're gonna fix that, but that was. Under significant discussion when we were assessing the, the need and they had some plans to try to improve it. Um, how they'll improve it and will it last forever? I don't know.
Fifty years.
The contractors, like, they said they, they were, they like to call this marshmallow hill and that some of them were familiar. And the nature of all this soil is very, very soft and, um. It, it's probably gonna continue to be an, a, a chronic issue that, that we built this on.
Do we, do we really need to, do we really need to pave the road around the jail? May, as opposed to hard pack, uh, that would, would, uh, not be subject to fracture and frosting, heaving and so forth. Uh, just a thought.
What does that mean to plowing?
I mean, plowing, um, it, it, we do have delivery trucks go- go- going around it, um. I, I think it's, I think it's needed.
Yeah, okay, so.
It's a squishy hill, remember, we, 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 uh, went down thirty feet. Still, uh, uh, screened and then compacted in two for intervals. The soil that's underneath the jail to get it to hold the weight of the building.
Wow.
Uh, and we spent about two million dollars on, uh. I think S W Coal and S U R to, uh, uh, filter out. The marshmallows and, and recontact, um, the, the soil underneath the, the building.
Yeah.
Marshmallow.
Yeah, yeah, um, but the soil was what it was, took a lot of it and there's a, there's just a, a whole bunch of. Water pressure coming off that hill.
Yeah, yeah, I was talking.
Yeah.
So the, uh, the motion, uh, would be to approve the contract for sidewalk construction at the Department of Correction. At a cost of fifty four thousand six hundred and eight three dollars and seventy five cents.
Is that move?
Second thing. Hi, Commissioner England, Commissioner Clark, alright.
So this was bid competitively and did we get more than one bid?
No, this was because we already have the company that's doing it.
Okay.
And, and it has to be, it, it, it's a change order, it's exactly what it is, so we had Gus go back up. And take a look at it and this is what the quote, they came back.
Okay, alright.
Alright, um, so at this time, I'm gonna ask the commissioners to, are you all set?
I'm all set, thank you, are you going non-public or?
I am.
Okay, um, I'm going, thank you.
Alright, thank you. At this point, I'd ask the, uh, commissioners to go into a non-public session, a non-public session is pursuant to RSA ninety one. Uh, uh, dash A colon three two A, dismisses promotion or compensation in public employee or disband as such employee. Or the investigation of any charges against him or unless the employee affected has a right to a public meeting. And request that meeting in open, which case that request shall be granted, this and this situation. We've had an individual that's come forward that would like to come be with the commissioners, um, and non-public. Okay, so, okay, so, uh, second, and then Commissioner Wasman. Hi, Commissioner England and Commissioner Clark.
Three of yours.
We are now non-publics, what we're going to do first is.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Autumn.
So, so you're gonna head downstairs with Kim? Kim's gonna work up something for you, tell you the process of what that means and then we'll go from there. Alright.
We wish you well.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Jack. I think he's a little late, he meant to leave at nine forty five.
Uh, can I take your copies?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Okay, back on an agenda here, um, my list is short today because. We've been doing a lot of different things, but it's all the same thing, it seems like lately. And it's really an update first and foremost of the, where we stand in reference to congressional spending requests. That we put out for, uh, Shaheen and, um, Pester last week. Um, what we have found at the end of the day, we were able to convince Shaheen's office. Um, and the whole, and the New Hampshire's Homeland Security that, that what we were doing. Or, you know, because we've been partnering with Mutual Aid here over here to, you know, this, uh, six million dollar project of upgrading their infrastructure in the communities. And, uh, we were convinced two out of the three that we're, this was a retrofit, um. The one that is the big decider and all that is, um, the, uh, sec- uh, area, what is it, um? FEMA's, uh, New Hampshire's, uh, district.
District one.
District one, yeah, was the, they see retrofit as a different wording. So we weren't able to push that through, get that letter, it needed to be, uh, signed off by the Homeland Security Director for New Hampshire. So in midstream, we changed to a HERSA grant, uh, with, with. Uh, boy.
Oh, what is it?
Um, it, it's a, it's a, it's a, another opportunity to pursue Monday, uh, money through the federal grant. Through the congressional spender in the que- request, you have to have a category where, where it lands.
Yeah.
Um, it's like the red barn, you know, we were, we received the congressional spinner request.
What's the category?
It's.
It first, Health Resources and Service Administration, um, and specifically they say. Emergency services are eligible.
Yeah. So, roll the dice there, but the bigger thing in all this is that, um. That we've been able to develop a working relationship with the, uh, director of Homeland Security for the state of New Hampshire. At the point where he wants us to come up, meet with his team. To ensure that no matter what happens, we're gonna find a way to get this funded. That's his own words, that we're going to do what it takes to take, to push this over the finish line. And, and he's like, um.
So, so there really was no opposition in district one, it was just a.
It was, it was that, the, the word, the definition, the definition of retrofit is something that they see different from what we're doing. And they couldn't get past that, and so we had to go in a different direction. So, right, what I've said to, uh, Don Bliss, who we've been working with, he's been helping us advocate. Um, from MRI, if you remember, is that, um, we're not gonna accept no. We're gonna keep on pushing and pushing, and we pushed hard enough to the point now where, um, um, uh. Director Buckson, um, has said to us that the Homeland Security in New Hampshire. That he wants us to come up, but he also says, you are the county that we should be looking to because of all the work you've done. When it comes to addressing needs, um, when, around first responders, um, to the point where we have. Uh, uh, money set aside to, uh, develop a, uh, emergency director for, for the county, which is a statute. That was unknown, unknown to us and all other counties. And I wanna make it very clear, just because we have an emergency, i- if we put this position, it, it has no. driven meaning that it means anything more. Towns still always will have their say about their, and the cities will always have their say about what their emergency is, but if it means that we can go after grants because we now have a standard and we can, we can do an emergency uh hazard mitigation plan um that covers the county as a whole, which is probably all the mitigation plans that are out there, and we just acknowledge that they're all out there, and they're all updated and current. And then we can apply for monies because of that, then I, we just wanna be helpful, and that's.
And that's just adopted.
That's what we're, looks, looks like that was what it's gonna be, and that we're, we've been working with Southwest Regional Planning Commission to um start seeing what that would look like, who who is outdated, who needs to be caught up, who doesn't even have one, and see if we can get all the towns, and then we have all the towns, we have that. And it's not, and again, it's sort of like when we, when COVID hit and we, I would get on a probably on a weekly basis, three to four emails attacking me for putting mask mandates and and threatening me to have mask mandates put in place, when in reality if I had any mask mandates, it was for county purposes only. And at not even up at the knee, uh up at the nursing home, because the nursing home went by the regulations of Center for Medicaid Services. So what people don't understand, and we need to continue to educate them, is that towns have their own government. They make their own decisions. We don't just come in and can and can overrule them. Maybe down in other parts of the country, yeah, county has more, has more ability, but in this area, it just doesn't happen. But going back to my initial point, we are continuing to move forward. We have an avenue, we're hoping that's the avenue that we go after. If not, maybe we look at Northern Borders in the summer when they open up the second, they have two, and for home, uh Northern Borders uh uh grants, you can go twice a year, and one of them is in the summer uh time. And if that's the case, then we'll, we'll see if we can apply there. We're also gonna be working with Homeland to uh recognize what else we can go after that was, it's within the guidelines that we can pursue. And see, just see what happens, um, but we are going to continue to do what we can to do, because people need to understand, and I say this more for the recording, because you already know this, is that the the infrastructure we have out there right now, there are no replacement parts unless you go on eBay. Or unless you buy a lot on eBay and stock up and you have it in-house. There's, there's not enough, the, and this is what we ran into here when we were able to find enough grant money to do the four point four million for the sheriff's dispatch, so the taxpayers didn't have to, this is all about us ensuring.
The country is doing this.
Right, and and.
There's only so much stuff out there.
Right, so we just need to, we need to work hard at upgrading these infrastructures, and once they're in, then we're in place for the next fifteen to twenty. Uh, it's about five, it's five point four plus eight hundred thousand. It's about, yes, yeah, a little over six million dollars if we do everything, you know, and it's probably closer to six point five million. Because, you know, if we really do it the right way, we also get all the towns' new radios that they'll need. The other ra- the radios, well, the radios they have today will work, but the newer radios would be for the longer haul. If we could do everything under one grant, why not? Why, why have taxpayers to pay for it if we can somehow, a local taxpayers pay for it when we can have, you know, bigger opportunities to to go after, which I will tell anybody, any other town, any other state are going after the same monies we're going after. And if we don't go after it, and we, and we put the burden on the taxpayers and not even try, shame on us.
Can I jump in? Just said last night that we're still uh paying more money to the federal than they're giving us back.
Yeah, just like, yeah, yeah.
And really quick, um, actually, now that we're going a different route through congressional directed spending, can we add back in that eight hundred thousand possibly for interoperability?
That will be a question that we can, we can ask.
Yeah, cuz that specifically under the original place we're gonna apply for, they said that the eight hundred thousand to be interoperable with the conquered area um mutual aid was just not flat out not allowed, and so we removed that eight hundred thousand.
Cuz it was new.
Yeah.
It was a new thing, and retrofit meant you're taking something that was already standard. And and so at the end of the day, we could possibly take a look at bumping that up if if but if not, then we can go after, you know, Northern Borders for for that that amount, and and it's and and there's a lot of ways that we can do things, people just need to, what I keep telling um uh Ju- Chief Sagamano is that over at Mutual Aid here um and in Southwest Mutual Aid is that patience, patience, we just need to figure it out. It's a puzzle that we're putting together. And every so often, somebody comes along, hits the table, and a piece falls off, and we gotta figure out where it fit in. And so we're just, we're just going through the process and trying to see what we can do. At the end of the day, it would be such a win for the communities in Cheshire County if we could somehow not put that tax burden, when, I mean, you, I think you were at the meeting when he said what the amount would be increases, you know, one town is paying thirteen, all of a sudden is paying like three hundred thousand dollars more, you know, because of the six million dollar price tag.
What's this all mean for Vermont?
It means that we need to organize over here and then take what we learn over here and place it over there. That's how I'm looking at it, because we can't do New Hampshire first. And they can, and they cannot, they can operate it, and then we have to go across the river and get that piece done. I'm just trying to figure out here how to go about it, and once we figure it out, if we can get Homeland Security to help us with this on some levels, whether it's through Northern Borders or whatever it is, then then they can communicate to their kind of parts over there. We can help, they can help us when they, when it goes to Governor Johnson of Vermont to uh sign off on the Northern Borders Grant, and all of a sudden, Bing Bang Boom, we're there. So we're not asking for six million from New Hampshire, we're asking for two point eight million currently. You know, and if you add on the, you know, add on the eight hundred thousand dollars, then, you know, then it adds more than that, but currently, they request two point eight million.
Case, which, which would be divided amongst the ten counties?
No, so, no, no, just, just three, it'd be, it'd be thirty, what is it, thirty-six towns? And that spread over three counties.
Okay, Sullivan and and.
Hillsboro?
Yeah. Um, and then Vermont has their own three counties, that about half of the towns that Southwest Mutual Aid covers over there, but any money we receive from Congress cannot be used in Vermont. They have to apply themselves.
Okay, yeah. Why is Northern Borders referring to the southern counties of the state then?
Northern Borders, okay, Northern Borders is a, you qualify for Northern Borders for years, for whatever reason. Cheshire County wasn't on it. We petitioned in coordination with Southwest Regional Planning Commission, we petitioned in Congress and Custer, actually, um, to put it on the farm bill, that we felt like we were a rural area that had socioeconomic struggles and that we were no different than Sullivan County.
Well, I think Northern Borders wouldn't, its origin to, an effort to to in, you know, inject some sort of vitality in.
There's, right, you you have to call, you have to qualify. Well, it's, you have to, well, it's northern parts, it's a northern part of the country, as in New York is, has some northern borders in it. Um, not every, not not every county in New York, but some of them in New York, Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire.
And for some of those.
That's why, that's why.
Some of those hinterlands really.
It's, it's, it's no different, it's, it's a a commission just like the Appalachian uh Commission is, there's multiple ones throughout the country that have certain areas, and it's all about socioeconomic and uh challenged communities.
So it's not referring specifically to the border between Northern New Hampshire, Coas County?
No, 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 Coas County, I believe, is part of the Northern Borders, and you know, I know it is, as is Sullivan County. As is Belknap County, and I wanna say Grapton County too.
Yeah, I think so, okay.
And I don't know if Carroll County is or not, but I don't know.
Maybe part of it.
So that's where we stand. Um, and and that's, that's what we're doing in reference to that, we're gonna continue to look at it, uh but it takes a lot of uh just multiple meetings of trying to have those conversations.
So there's probably added a year to the process.
Oh, I'm still shooting for twenty twenty-five. That's been my hope all along, is to really get, get an idea by October of the funding that the Northern Borders, we applied for it in in June, July, then we would know by October, November, if we got it. And then we have to jump through the hoops that we needed to jump through to get it done, but that's fine, we can, we know that better this time, and I think they've actually gotten better too. Or other grants, or we'll know, we'll know, we'll know quickly about congressional. Probably by no later than May, I would guess.
Yeah, maybe towards end of May.
Yeah. So we'll see, and then we'll see how much they gave us, because they may not give us all of it, if they give us any of it. And if they give us one point two, then we need to figure out where we're getting the rest.
Do we need the whole thing to implement it or do it piece by piece? You know, are there different projects that can be cut away?
Probably, there's probably some level of that, I wouldn't, I can't speak to that, Joe and others that would would need to be the ones to speak to it, but the bottom line is, is that uh let's, let's, we're just gonna keep throwing it in and see how much money we can get, because that's what we did last time. I mean, we got congressional, and then we added on Northern Borders, then we added on this, and all of a sudden, you know, we had enough money to cover, cover the four point four million, so. Um, next thing up is, um, we've been working on forever, the podcast, um, uh, and so starting, and we're excited that uh that we're gonna be really starting the the podcast. Probably next week, we'll do a dry run of of something, and then the following week will will start, and it will be, oh, you know, I I may have you on, I may have you on at some point.
Well, I was gonna say, I I think that somewhere along the line, the Cheshire Community Power should be highlighted.
We want.
Especially, you know, uh, Hisdale just turned in their signed document. Gilson is so, uh, over caring soon. Suri is signing on, Troy is signing on.
Yeah, well, and what what we wanna do is, is, is uh.
Matter of fact, they made me put on the brakes.
Really?
For signing more up.
Really?
Yeah, because, you know, because it's becoming, you know, because every time uh we have a launch, uh, it takes resources.
Yeah.
To onboard all this stuff.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, besides other, other towns in the state that are joining, we're up to sixty-eight now.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm I'm getting half of the county here so far.
Yeah, so for the record, you're just too successful.
Well, for some reason, uh, yeah, I'm unable to, yeah.
That's great news.
Yeah, that's good news. I I think it's, it's great. I I think it's great on a lot of, a lot of levels. One, it gives those people the the uh a great rate. But more importantly, it it's gonna generate more revenue too um with more, more towns and more people in, that will then generate revenue. One, that we can use to help offset spikes. If I'm saying, and that's the big one, and then also generate revenue that you can use on.
That's, that's my uh secret plan is to uh with with along with all of the other towns, is to generate secondary reserves where we can actually plan a large project uh for all the members, uh, and uh, you know, as we were talking with Frank, you know.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we can get that down to a nickel, we can do something big for everybody.
Yeah.
And uh really have, have, have something that's, that's not only cheaper, but sustainable and under our control.
Right. So, so that to be able to tell that story is, I think, gonna be something that is, yeah, it definitely, my, my, my goal is that in the simplest form, that you'll be able to go on our website and you'll see a thing about um uh it's, what we're calling conversation, county conversations with Chris Coats. So it's, you know, uh, and underneath it will be community power. So you hit that, and you learn about community power. You hit uh Maplewood, and you have a conversation about Maplewood with Catherine Tinda. Finances with Cheryl Tromble, and you know, that it's, I'll be, you know, and we'll script it ahead of time in that what is it, Terry, that you, you, you develop a script, you can work with Davis, with myself, whoever.
I believe that.
No, 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 see, that, no, you know that, you know that it's gonna be, you know, sitting back and just shooting the breeze, and 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 when you say something, I'm gonna, you know, push it a little bit farther to explain, or if I, you say something I don't think I get, then I'm gonna ask, you know, but it's just a it's a really, really, what I wanna create is something that's entertaining for people to watch, educational for people to watch, and it tells a story. And so um I'm looking forward to starting that. Um, we're just, we're trying in so many ways right now to put the narrative out of what we're, we're, what we're doing. Um, because I just believe I can go to every single town and talk about the county until I'm blue in the face, and I will be doing that on some level. But that's only one little piece of it, and if I don't do all these other things and give as many people the opportunity to understand what we're doing here, you know, cuz on some level, we're not doing anything special, but on other levels, we actually are. And so to to really make people aware is great. I mean, look at, I mean, I'm so proud of the fact that Merrimack joined, and I hope other counties look at this and say, what are, why aren't we doing this? Because they're missing out, even if it's just for them and their power, and not offer up to the other towns. But look, you're, like you said, by 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 June or July, by June or July, it's twelve, gonna be twelve towns in Cheshire County. That's a good thing, because those towns are gonna be getting the racing, and a lot of these towns don't have the bandwidth to do something that other communities have the bandwidth to do, that choose to go with signing on for a three-year contract. We went down that road, and it wasn't bad for us, but this is better for us. You know, I think.
Absolutely.
So that's our goal, and we're gonna be getting to it.
Okay, so you said pop podcast, okay, so this is our, our, what, where are we launching this? Is it just the general web book?
Yeah, this is the, that's our.
We're gonna have it in many places, so we have multiple recording devices, as one of them we have an iPad set up on a tripod, we're gonna use Facebook Live um and actively record it, so people can ask questions and view it directly on our Facebook page, which will then save the recording afterwards, which we can post elsewhere. Um, so that's, it will be a video in that sense, um, and then I'll also be recording it on a device like this with our microphones that we have downstairs and putting it on Spotify and our website as well, maybe um other places where you can get your podcasts.
Well, on the the TV channel.
We, we're gonna offer it up, we're gonna, we're gonna offer it up to them, yeah.
Um, but that's about it. On on our website, we'll have the audio recording and the visual recording, so you can sell, don't have to dress nice or anything, but don't come in your pajamas, so.
I have some pretty nice pajamas.
Well, that's fine, if they're nice pajamas, that's different. But, yeah, we'll be able to share it in many different ways and blast it out there.
And the last thing I have is that I've been working with, I uh talking to Catherine, I've been just making sure that um I'm talking to Bruce, as he, as you know, uh Bruce Harrison, who is the facility director of the nursing room, who's done an exceptional job over the years up there, um, is retiring.
Oh, no.
And and they already have somebody coming in, and and we're excited about that, and uh.
So is that the person who was there, who was at the meeting last week up there?
No, he, he's the, he's the water wastewater manager.
Yeah, I remember who was.
The guy that.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, so um I just, we do have the uh project that's gonna be going on up at the assisted living, where we're gonna move the residents into the one, into uh the the apartments that are open. Uh, the the third floor rooms that are open, so that we can renovate all the apartments. So uh I just wanna make sure the RFP is ready to go and everything's ready to go, that so this person coming in can, you know, already have the process moving forward, and Bruce is on top of that, so that's all, all happened.
When did Bruce actually retire?
And by the way, I just want to say again for the record that the, all the uh all the updates of the apartments are being covered, not by, not, it's not in nothing. It's in the budget, but it has matching uh uh funds to it, and so it's a, it's a expense that has uh revenues, and because we're utilizing monies that we're, we're able to use to uh grant them that we get. So that's a good thing. So that's uh, so that's the twenty apartments will be, be renovated, and they, they've been in place for years, and the cupboards and all that stuff are falling apart, so we, it was time for us to upgrade everything.
Yes, I was just trying to.
When does Bruce actually?
April twenty-sixth is his last day.
Oh, so coming up in a month, three weeks.
Yeah.
I was thinking about getting with him so that he could orient me with the the projects and all this stuff in the county, the energy related stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Amanda, well, the great thing is Amanda Basset, who's his administrative lead, is uh very, very good, knowledgeable, and so between. Uh, the new individual that's coming on board and Davis and myself and Amanda. We're the ones that are are going to, but I think it would be healthy for your knowledge just to have that opportunity to meet with um with uh Bruce. You know, to ask him any questions you may have, because I think he is a wealth of information. Doesn't mean he's going away in the sense of, we can always give him a call when we have a question. But he won't be there day in, day out. And I, and like I said, he has the highest respect of his staff. Because of the way he goes about his business and and he does a great job. And during COVID, I mean, don't forget, during COVID, we had. A thirty-six million dollar renovation expansion going on and we never. And we were able to meet all the standards that the state came in and told us and Center for Medicaid Services said we needed to do and we hit. We uh we landed the on the date that we projected and so I think we did pretty good, so. That's what I have. Um. Any old business? New business? Vote to accept the Weekly Manifest in minutes of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Send move.
Okay, Commissioner England, Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Okay, uh, anything on the calendar, David?
Uh, no changes.
Okay, no general discussion, um motion to adjourn.
I send move to return.
All right, second, Commissioner England.
Hi.
And Commissioner Clark. We are adjourned. Just tell him when you shut off.